Good evening, everyone. I'll call the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting to order. Jenny, will you please call Rome?
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Ms. Amber Rose Grooms.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Mayor Fox. Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Ms. Cram.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Councilmember Amber Rose Groom, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight? All right, this evening, we have a special presentation concerning Life Sports, and I'd like to welcome Jim Soder to come forward and share some of the information you have about Life Sports with us. Welcome, Jim.
I turn, press, okay, thank you. Well, respectfully, it's, uh, can't, can't thank you enough for the opportunity to come and share about the effort that we're putting in here. I did bring two of my teammates in this endeavor with me. Tyler Wolf is the Director of Student Wellness at Dublin City Schools. Tyler and I have been kind of combined in this effort for years now. He was my children's principal at Old Saw Mill Elementary and many, many years ago, and as time moved on, stayed in contact with me to continue this work. And then in addition to that, we have Dawn Anderson Butcher. Dawn is a professor with Ohio State University and the Executive Director of Training and Research for Life Sports, also a Jerome resident and proud mom of two that went through the school system. In, in like trying to approach how to talk about this, it's a pretty comprehensive situation that I think we're challenged with, and so like many things, I think the best way to kind of take you through it is just telling you the story of how we arrived at this. I'm, I'm the son of two Greek immigrants. We grew up in Upper Arlington, and so some of the things that I saw in the community really resonated with me. They reminded me of my own upbringing. And when I came up in Dublin schools with my children, was very involved with their athletics and in their upbringing. Always volunteered as a coach and DYA and things like that. And up until the time that they were in middle school, everything was exactly what I, what I fully expected in the Dublin youth experience. When we got to middle school, I couldn't help but notice in the children's athletics, a little bit of a difference from what I thought I was going to see. There are a lot of children that were in middle school and high school sports that were just learning the sport in their first year, which is, is really unique. I've never really come across that. And to go against children who have been playing in athletics since they were in first, second, or third grade seemed a little unfair. There was a little bit of a disparity in their equipment. The amount of parents in the stands kind of took me back a little bit. And being an active parent, I just wanted to get involved and try to help, you know, just as, as a dad, try, try to help the children. And we're, we're kind of a lacrosse family. I mean, the kids played a lot of sports growing up, but lacrosse is something that my family was passionate about. And so I, I used to try to get into the schools and get access to the children, still do that to this day, provide free equipment to the kids, free clinics for the kids. And Tyler was one of the principals that was very helpful to me in making that happen. That said, it was kind of an uphill battle. I mean, I, I have to be honest in telling you, how many children did we get that weren't going to play to play is probably on one hand. And it really led to the question of why, why is this occurring? And, and as I started digging into it, again, trying to go down the rabbit hole even further, I started getting more involved. So I joined the DYA board. I'm an at-large member of DYA. I oversee the scholarship and no coincidence, partition, participation committees for DYA. And there I thought I'd be able to make a little more of an impact. Unfortunately, I've come to learn through time that some of the barriers that are in the way are more than I can accomplish. And to be honest with you, in many respects, more than DYA can overcome. The amount of financial, cultural, language, geographical, childcare issues that, that exist inside the school system and, and most specifically on the Scioto feeder schools is a real challenge. I mean, at Davis Middle School, at last check, forty-two first languages are not English in the school, present in the school. Just that alone gives you a little bit of a picture of some of the cultural barriers that probably exist. In, in my upbringing, I remember when my oldest brother tried to play youth sports. And he asked my parents if they would allow him to go ahead and give baseball a try. And mom went and bought a, a glove for him from a garage sale, and she bought the wrong hand, you know? And so he spent his entire first season catching it, taking the glove off, and then throwing the ball. And that said, though, sports were a way for me to make friends, for my brothers to make friends. We, we had just enough money to get that house, you know, when we first got there. Aside from that, we didn't have much in common with the other kids in the community. And I think that's something that we see in the school system right now, especially in the Scioto side of, of the feeder system. And so, you know, with that said, years later, Tyler called me up last winter and said, I came across an opportunity that I think, you know, might be able to make a little bigger, bigger impact with this. And, and he introduced me to Dawn from Life Sports here. Life Sports is, is a five oh one C three hosted through Ohio State's College of Social Work. Their mission is to prepare youth for life, leadership, life and leadership through sport. The vision is to be the national example of positive youth development programming for children. It's all done through outreach, teaching, learning, and research. Life Sports focuses on four core principles: self-control, effort, teamwork, and social responsibility. And so I want to make sure you understand that as much as it might sound like it, it's not an athletic endeavor. It is, it is used to teach children life skills using sport as a way to do it. And anytime you get kids in, in an environment where they have to work with others to accomplish something or to reach a goal or to, you know, compete, right? They learn the skills that prepare them for the world out there. And there are a lot of challenges for the kids in, in Dublin in general and, and for those on the east side. Field and gym space, as, as I'm sure you know, with the planning for, for the parks and whatnot, is a real hot commodity. And we have already out, outgrown our amenities right now. And so in many cases, even though children want to play, there is not room to bring them into the programs. Okay? The, the growth of club sport, that, that is becoming an issue for our children to get access to sports across the country. That is not something unique to Dublin either. It's a major factor out there. And what is generally happening is the haves are continuing to get the access to it, and the have-nots are not getting the exposure or the trial to sports that many of us probably remember from our upbringings. Twenty-three percent of the children in Scioto's feeder system are on free and reduced lunch. That's a big indicator of the poverty level that exists within the school system, and that exists in Dublin in general as well. That's five percent of the students in, in the Kaufman and Jerome feeder systems. There's a twelve percent gap between the children in the Scioto feeder, feeder system that, that report how they can regulate their emotions. The, the school system uses something called Pandora's tests to do that. And those children are significantly behind the rest of the district. Some of these things have all combined to, to create an environment where some of those barriers exist, and it's, it's just hard for them to get access to sport or to make friends or to play with kids in the playground. If you're a Dublin student on the east side, so to speak, just to get your parents to let you play one of those sports, if you accomplish that, the fields are very far away, right? Hard for you to get if it's a single parent home, single automobile home, no automobile home, it's a real big challenge for you. And we are seeing those, the effects of that in DYA. And DYA, one-third, the ratio is one-third of the children in the Scioto feeder system participate in youth sport compared to the other high school feeders, right? Pretty drastic difference. With that said, you know, we teamed up and created this effort to bring Life Sports to Dublin, right? Life Sports serves other underserved communities across the city. Most of them are, you know, what, what you would picture as part, part of the toughest parts of the city, right? What is unique to that and compared to our situation is in the Scioto feeder system, it's a little bit of a blind spot for us. One, the cultural diversity is a beautiful thing in the school system, but it also presents some challenges in, in the neighborhood and the kind of community environment that the kids are in. If you don't speak the same language as your neighbor, they're not going to watch your kids or help them go to practice and things like that. So there, there's a lot in the way. And Life Sports, to my knowledge, is one of the only things out there that has the resources involved to make sure that children get exposure to sport, learn life skills, and are also tracked and measured in a way that is, is really unique. And so we hit the ground running last year and tried to solicit as much support from community partners within Dublin to help us. And I do want to highlight them if I could for just a moment. One, Dublin City Schools has been a tremendous help. Not only did the camp happen last year, but they gave us the facility to do it in. We were at Riverside Elementary last year, provided transportation, food. Transportation is a huge solution in this. I want, I want you to know that. I mean, they, they can't probably wouldn't happen. Transportation, food, the facility. In addition to that, the, the city provided a school resource officer for us. Thank you for that. He is adored by the children. I mean, I just can't stress enough. And, and what a great picture, too, that, that the kids see him as someone that they can trust and look up to. And he's right in the mix, playing with them, playing basketball and baseball and all those things. Stanley Steamer was the first company that, that jumped on board. And for me, tried to find the funding for this, gave this effort legitimacy from the jump. And Stanley Steamer came back on board this year and increased their, their funding for us. The Lindy Infante Foundation, Brad and Stephanie Infante, both Dublin residents as well. They, they oversee this foundation in honor of their father, also trying to bring sport to children that don't have access. I'm very blessed to have my outfit, Cameron Mitchell Restaurants and the Rusty Bucket support me, not only with my time, which this time of year is, is really busy on this front. And so I'm blessed to have them support me in this effort and support the cause financially. Lifetime Fitness over on Hard Road and Saw Mill. One thing about Lifetime, I've got to tell you, is just special. Never once asked about marketing, never once asked about any, they wanted to know that it was a real program, it was measurable, and they also wanted to know how they can volunteer. They have no interest in anything else, and their criteria for their funding is pretty significant as well. Impact Sixty, pardon me, Impact Sixty, a foundation, I think born out of Marysville, right? Also supported us financially. Honda Marysville supported us. The Northwoods Foundation, the Dublin Chamber has been a huge asset to me in this endeavor. And Engage Central Ohio did not help us with funding, but helped us in ways that I just can't really put into words for you. They just helped a lot, right? The children in, in the program are identified by the guidance counselors as those in need. And so this is not just offered to anybody. They're, they're children that are struggling emotionally or in their productivity in school. And the camp, transportation, food, all provided at no cost. Eighty percent of the kids that we had in the camp last year were Columbus residents in Dublin schools. Twenty percent of the children were Dublin residents within the district. We circle back with clinics throughout the year as well, with the same staff that are at the camp over the summer. And, and so in this, we hosted a four-week camp at Riverside Elementary where the kids were exposed to eight sports. And then after their sport sessions, they go into a chalk talk session where they're asked to share how did they display the skills that they're constantly being taught in these classrooms? And they're, they're starting to see some, some real progress after nine months. I also wanted to tell you, I, I asked the superintendent recently, you know, is, is there something better? Is there something better for these children? And he said, Jimmy, there, there isn't. It's just, this is the national model for, for what it does. And, and we are starting to see some incredible results already. The children are, are testing in a way that's showing they're improving their self-control, their teamwork, and their ability to regulate their emotions. The youth involved that see behavior health providers move from forty-fourth to fifty-ninth in the Social Skills Improvement System, which is a rating I, I can't pretend I have my mind wrapped around, but it means some, something, right? Motor skills of the students improved from the thirty-fourth to the forty-second percentile. Think about that. Motor skills in the thirty-fourth percentile. It, it blew me away, but if children are not getting any activity, which I think is what we find in many of these situations, if the kids are not at school, they're at home. And they're at home either doing nothing or getting into trouble, right? And so we have to have some extracurricular for them when there isn't really the access that you might think of when you think about the Dublin youth experience. And eighty-two percent of the children reported that they're now more likely to play a school sport. The other thing that was good to see, but also sad, was the month of healthcare, I'm sorry, month of childcare that was provided to the families was a huge solution. And so with this said, you know, we, we have this camp that we had last year. We hosted a hundred and twenty children at the camp last year. We hope to double the camp in size this year. The school system was generous enough to give us Davis Middle School this year, a much bigger campus with a stadium and track and, and all those things. And, and we'd like to increase it in size, not just within the grade levels we're working in right now, but also extend it to other grade levels as time goes on. I guess the ideal vision of it would be K through five or K through six or one through six, you know, something along those lines where these children that are underserved and in need get a little bit of a different, an additional boost to help change their trajectory as they move on. And I think as, as time goes on, you know, this is just my perspective. I can't pretend to understand the scale of what you deal with, you know, I, I, I really, I, I gotta think that's probably nice to have someone come in here and say that to you. You probably don't hear that much, but I would never claim that. But I, I do fear that the need will only grow in the future. When you think about the, the the affordable housing, right, that is, is existing within Dublin school system and starting to come into Dublin as well, it, it is a place where people are going to make sure their children get a great education and, and running from other areas to go do it, no different than why my dad picked that house in Arlington back when I was young. And with that comes some challenges or opportunities, depending how you want to look at it. And so I hope that we can ask the city to support us in this. I know, I know there are some grants that we can apply for, which, which we will. I also ask that, you know, each of you, if you could, just, just consider us with all of your networking and partnerships within the city or elsewhere that could support this, because the scary thing for me is funding-wise, I'm, I'm currently the staff of one. You know, out there kind of pounding the pavement to do this is such a good thing. You know, when we had orientation for the families last year, I really wondered what I was going to see when I walked into that door, and it was exactly what I thought I was going to see. And then when we had the first week of camp and the students got to meet each, because these are from all the different feeder schools on the Scioto side of, of the system for the most part, right? So these kids might be in the same grade levels, but they don't know each other. They're just strangers, okay? Come back three days later, they have their arms wrapped around each other. They're, they're telling us what they want to do with their careers, smiles on their faces. It, it was the most beautiful thing, right? And now that we have it, we, we don't want it to stop, and it does no good if it stops. The, the other thing I think is important about this to mention is that if the children don't have that activity during their downtime, they will regress to the level below where they were when school ended. There's, there's nothing for them to do, right? So, so everything that, I can't say everything that they learned, but studies show that their progress in growing as a young adult not just stops, goes backwards, right? And Life Sports is, is a very unique in that it circles back repeatedly. It has the resources of professionals, behavioral professionals, sports professionals, et cetera, to be there to assist the children, right? And so our hope is that we can start to build some permanence and some sustainability within this community to keep it moving for years to come, years to come.
Jim, thank you so much. And I hope that this opportunity to be able to talk to the public about Life Sports, and obviously the program is wonderful. Hopefully, if, I don't know if you need volunteers, obviously you need funding, but we'll, we'll certainly keep your, your organization in mind, and I hope that the, the ability here for others to hear about you will bring more people to your door. Thank you so very much for bringing this forward this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. The opportunity to align resources starts with opportunities like this. And so, you know, it, it is a, is a very worthy cause, right? It's, it's the kids that are going to be in our community in the future. And, and the other thing with it is, is that if you don't invest them in them, they could become challenges for the community to handle as well. I don't, I don't mean to say that in a threatening way. It's just, it's just a reality. If you don't give the kids something to do, they, they could get themselves into doing things that you don't want to deal with, right? And that's just the natural way that things work, so.
Well, thank you so much for everything that you do. We so appreciate it. And I know the kids are benefiting so much from, from your enthusiasm and from all the work at Ohio State and from the Dublin City Schools. So I know that if you have any further questions or any other help that you might need, we have staff here always that are available to talk with you, so.
Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda is citizen comments, and this is an opportunity for citizens who would like to come forward and speak on a topic that's not on the agenda here this evening. Lindsay, is there anyone that we have?
Good evening. Yes, Michael Medvikov is here.
Michael, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address, that would be great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Member of the council, Michael Medvikov, four five five One Laramore Street in Dublin. So I'm, I'm here, kind of didn't have anything prepared for tonight, except for over the weekend, some events took place. I live in Bridge Park. Everybody knows Bridge Park is kind of the gem of Dublin. We all enjoy it. I think Crawford Hoynes done a great job master planning it, going through land use, comprehensive land use and all that. However, it has become a problem. And I've lived here almost three years, building right down the road, so been a member of this community for quite some time. And we've had so many break-ins and so many problems. In fact, I just filed a report with Officer Moreland, who's done a great job, very professional. Dublin Police has been great. So, and, and I don't want to quantify these things because I don't have all of the data with me. However, a number of cars have been getting broken into in the garages. And we brought this up to Crawford Hoynes a number of occasions. Over the weekend, I actually went as far as installing my own camera system in the garage, because nothing like that exists. They did not put the infrastructure in place. They did not have the security measures in place. And I think they owe it to the community to make sure that they brought this wonderful concept to Dublin. And now we're at a crossroads. We're actually a perfect segue. We've got a bunch of kids that are running around at two in the morning, breaking into cars, and we've seen the whole theft ring. They may not be from Dublin, but the point is that the venue attracts a particular sort of folks, and they're not monitored. The place is not secure. So I know I have five minutes. I'm just going to bring it right to a point. I have camera footage of kids trying to break into my car over the weekend. I brought it to Crawford Hoynes' attention on Saturday on deaf ears, filed a police report. I don't expect everybody to drop everything they're doing. It's not, you know, bigger fish to fry. However, it's part of an ongoing issue. And so I implore the council to have a conversation, and I understand it's private property. There was particular issues. There was divisions between private, but they took a lot of money in tax abatements. You know, I understand there's a lot of infrastructure that went in. But I feel like they owe a debt to the community to be able to address these criminal concerns that we're dealing with on an ongoing basis. So I hope we get some kind of dialogue going on. I'm happy to bring other folks. I'm happy to bring other folks that have suffered, had their cars broken into, and have been victims of this criminal, whatever activities have been going on. But again, short and sweet. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for bringing it to our attention. Any other, any other people?
If I might, I'd just like to add, we have our retreat coming up. And on the agenda for our retreat is an evaluation of, you know, Bridge Park, where we envisioned it would be and where it is. And I suspect that that will be part of that conversation at that point in time. But I know in the interim, the police certainly will be in touch, and he'll be developing some strategic plans too. But I wanted you to know that that was on our agenda previously, and that's something, a topic we're going to take up in earnest.
Next is the consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any item from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Jenny, please call roll.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Ms. Am Rose Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Introduction and first reading ordinances are next. I move to waive council rules of order and read ordinances zero six dash twenty-three through zero nine dash twenty-three together. Is there a second?
Second.
Jenny, please call roll.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ordinance six twenty-three, appropriate easement from Michael J. String and Melanie R. Fornier String, husband and wife from the property located at seventy-five Franklin Street for the public purpose of carrying out the South High Street Utility Burial Phase One Project. Ordinance seven twenty-three, appropriate easements from Harry G. Hirth, trustee of the Harry G. Hirth Revocable Trust dated April twenty-eight, two thousand and six from the property located at one five zero Franklin Street. Ordinance eight twenty-three, appropriate easements from Evelyn Worchansky and John I. Worchansky, trustees of the Evelyn H. Worchansky Revocable Trust dated April tenth, nineteen ninety-six from the property located at one six zero Franklin Street. And ordinance nine twenty-three, appropriate easements from Diana L. Tout and Gerald A. Tout, husband and wife from the property located at one seven two Franklin Street.
I'll introduce it.
Our report this evening is from our Director of Engineering, Paul Hammer Smith. Evening, Paul.
Used to advance the first phase of the South High Street Utility Burial Project. Acquisition of property interest from twenty-three property owners in the Phase One project area is necessary to construct the project. The acquisitions are complete with the exception of acquiring necessary easements from four property owners. On February twenty-seventh, council approved four resolutions of intent to appropriate easements from the four parcels, which were the first legislation necessary to commence the appropriation of the easements. The ordinances before you for first reading this evening are the next legislation necessary to authorize the appropriation of the easements. These ordinances will be presented for a second reading and public hearing at the March twenty-seventh council meeting. Certainly, negotiations with each of the property owners will continue with the hope a fair settlement can occur. Staff recommends adoption of ordinances oh six dash twenty-three through oh nine twenty-three at the second reading and public hearing on March twenty-seventh, authorizing the appropriation of the easements and to allow the project to remain on schedule and proceed to construction. I'll be glad to answer any questions the council might have regarding these ordinances.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have staff, do we have any comments on this? All right, none. Council, do you have any questions for Paul? Any discussion? No. The second reading on this will be, as you mentioned, on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Thank you. Ordinance ten dash twenty-three.
Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report this evening is from our Director of Finance, Matt Stifler. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, members of council. Before you have ordinance ten dash twenty-three, the Q one supplemental. A memo was included outlining those appropriations, and staff recommends approval at the second hearing at our next council meeting.
Do we have any public comment on this? All right. Questions? Discussion from Matt this evening? Chris?
Matt, when you come back, can you talk a little bit about some of these projects in in a little bit more detail? Some of the requests regarding, let's see, section five, what what some of those improvements might be? I don't know if these are improvements that we have previously discussed, or if these are newly identified issues. Some of them are more clear. The section six for the tank painting. There was a reappropriation for Riverside Crossing Park. I don't know if that budget's still going to meet what we anticipated the next phase was going to be in its entirety, or if it is some subset of that. Wasn't for certain. And then section section one about the water booster station maintenance, and is that the one there on Dublin Road? And and maybe we could get an update on the status of that. It looks like that has been relatively inactive for a while. And I know that you're the finance guy, you're not the construction guy. But just kind of a little bit more skin on what exactly these are projects are.
Sure, I'd be happy to bring you some more information. I can say these are all reappropriations of projects that were approved in the twenty twenty-two CIP or earlier. So but we can get you that that more detailed information, and that's not a problem.
Great, yeah. If we could just know which projects they are with a little bit of detail, I'd really appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. On section three, Matt, requesting funding for the Safety Fund for Support Services and Partnerships. So is this funding for the individual at Centaro or on our team? Or it wasn't clear to me what that particular, or it isn't an individual that's funding the program. Just a little more information, please.
So this will be funding for us to contract with Centaro, and I believe they are intending to hire an individual to support this program. But we will be contracting with them to provide these services. This is a part of the pilot program that was kind of intended to be funded out of the funds that were made available from the ARPA funds in ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two. So that program kind of put forth a two-year pilot to try this out. And then if, depending on the success of that program, we'll evaluate that in a future operating budget.
So is this ARPA money then, or no?
No, this is general fund money that was freed up from our utilization of the ARPA funding. And I hate to be so technical about it, but I just want to be clear.
Thank you, Matt. Okay.
Any other questions? None? All right. Second reading on our public hearing is scheduled for March twenty-seventh. Thank you. Introduction, public hearing, and on resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the annual sidewalk maintenance program for twenty twenty-three.
I'll introduce it.
All right, our staff report is from our Deputy Director of Engineering, Brian Gabel.
Good evening, members of council. I'll lower this a bit so you can see me. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the twenty twenty-three annual sidewalk maintenance program. On February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, five bids were received and publicly opened by engineering staff. This program provides for sidewalk repairs and replacement throughout the city and is funded in the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven capital improvements program in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand for the annual sidewalk maintenance program. In regards to trees, each site is unique and reviewed by engineering and forestry staff for tree conflicts, which involves analyzing actual root impacts prior to any cutting. Staff communicates impacts to the residents where the tree is located. For trees that may require removal, staff is is and has been offering sidewalk meandering to the affected owners. Should the owner not desire to perform the meandering, some testing can be done by staff prior to deciding to remove the tree after the affected roots have been trimmed. As always, our goal is to preserve trees whenever and wherever possible. Staff recommends council approval of resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Strawser Paving Company, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and eighty-five cents for this program. I'll be happy to address any questions council may have about this resolution.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any comments, Lindsay? All right. Comments on this, on the sidewalk? Kathy, you're not touching this room.
No, everybody looks at me, so. I just wanted to say thank you very much, Brian, for the, and to the team that's worked so hard on the tree meandering and innovations and approach to save the to save the trees. So I know that it's come a long way from even a few years back. And I know the homeowners and the neighbors appreciate it, and I just want to say thank you for that, so. Thank you.
It's great, isn't it, that we we managed to make people happier about the tree? So we're Tree City, USA, Sidewalk City, USA, too, so that's great. Thank you, Brian. Jenny, will you please call roll? Or, oh, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't see you light up.
There are two just north of the Delaware County line. One of them looks like it might be at the underpass under Dublin Road. And then there's another one, but I'm not aware of any sidewalks up there in near Phil Village that, you have any indication of what those two items might be?
I would have to investigate the specific items to get back with you. I can certainly follow up.
It's not that important. Maybe just follow up email afterwards. I'm sure whatever it is, I just was curious because I was not aware of public.
Of course, yeah. Sometimes there's a few sections that are a little further off the road that are also city maintained. So occasionally, something of that nature.
Thank you so much.
Don't want to miss anybody. Anyone else have anything? No? Jenny, please call roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Am Rose Grooms.
Yes.
Resolution, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five pavement marking services.
I'll introduce it.
Brian?
Good evening again. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five pavement marking services contract. On February twenty twenty, excuse me, on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, one bid was received and publicly opened by engineering staff. This program provo-
Person up, give a bid on this?
We, there's only a few companies that do this kind of work. So we've had some others in the past and with mixed experience. So we feel very confident in the in the one bid that we did get. Obviously, we'll, we hope to try and get some more bidders in the in the next project when we do this in twenty twenty-six, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? None? Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Another business this evening, we're going to be speaking, talking about the Public Art Review Committee. And our staff report will be from our Deputy City Manager, Robert Rance. Welcome, Robert.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. This evening, we're coming with a recommendation for a referral to committee for the Public Art Review Committee. Just by way of background, the Public Art Master Plan in twenty nineteen, the Public Services Committee reviewed the plan and made a recommendation after COVID in twenty twenty-one to the city council for approval, at which time the Public Art Master Plan was approved. The Public Art Master Plan includes guidance, goals, and specifically several recommendations on a broad range of topics. You can see the topics in front of you, but amongst those topics, establishing the Dublin Public Art Review Committee is one of those. So the Public Art Review Committee for the master plan is to serve as an advisory body to the Arts Council and the city council, as well as city staff, in matters of reviewing and recommending art, public art specifically. It should be comprised of subject matter experts from various fields, including contemporary public art, community engagement, municipal services, and business interests. The recommendation from the master plan is that the park include nine members representing the Arts Council, city of Dublin, and the community at large. So three members of the DAC to include the executive director plus two DAC staff, two members of Dublin staff as appointed by the city manager, and then one artist at large, one business representative at large, and two members of the community at large. And again, just to reiterate that the committee member should have a good knowledge of matters that will be taken into consideration by the park, which includes matters with reference to public art and public art acquisition in the city. So the park is responsible for several items, including obviously meeting. But the public art review process is a very important part of what this committee will undertake. So with reference to park appointments, the master plan recommends that the four at-large members should be appointed by consensus between DAC and the city. There's been discussion internally at both DAC and at the city about the process by which this will occur. But if you look at the the minutes from the PSC, this is something that was left to be, the details to be determined at a future date, which is why we are approaching the council now for this referral. So the the staff's recommendation, due to the importance of the park as an advisory role, the importance of invisibility of public art to the city, we recommend that the park be established in a manner similar to other city boards, commissions, and committees that advise city council. So we do recommend the referral of this topic to the Public Services Committee for further discussion to include the scope, composition, appointment process, draft code of regulations. And you saw a code of regulations draft that was included from the DAC in your packet, as well as alignment with other committees that serve to advise the city council. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So any public comment, Lindsay? All right. Council, questions for Robert?
Robert, I just, on the composition piece, it's going, I think it may be a challenging to find people in the community that have a lot of awareness about our public art that aren't already on the board. So maybe, you know, ask Public Services Committee if they want to drill down on, you know, should they be just members of the community, or perhaps board members of the Arts Council or Arts Council Board members, would they be excluded from being the folks from the community? Just some clarity around that, because I think they might be a good source of reference for that. If you're going to have the director and two staff people, I think maybe the opportunity of having a board member or two might help make the conversation a little more robust.
Yeah, we'll absolutely do that. Thank you.
Send that message along. Thank you.
There are a number of folks that consistently display art in the rec center. If you go through there frequently, you'll see a lot of the same names appearing year after year. I think those would be great candidates, and they're Dublin residents, and I have one that I can refer to you as well.
Thank you.
No other comments? All right. Well, I would like to make a motion to refer the Public Art Review Committee to the Public Services Committee based on the recommendations of staff. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. May please call roll.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Am Rose Grooms.
Yes.
All right, next is our staff comments. Megan O'Callaghan, our city manager, has some things to tell us, I'm sure.
Good evening, members of council. I just have a few items to share. The city retained EMHNT for design of the second year of the Waterway Maintenance Program, and this project will perform waterway bank stabilization at various locations throughout the city. Survey crews will be performing field surveying and data collection in Wyon dot. Survey crews will be performing field surveying and data collection in Wyandot Woods and in Shannon Glen. So we'll be sending out notification letters to the residents in those neighborhoods tomorrow. And work is planned to begin there next week. The engineering division will be holding a resident information meeting on Thursday, March 30th, from 6:00 to 7:30 to discuss the findings of a recently completed stormwater infrastructure capacity analysis for the Bristol Commons area and the Bran Road pedestrian tunnel near Bristol Parkway. So that meeting will take place in the talus at the DCRC. And notices are being sent to area residents to inform them of that meeting as well. And then more than 300 residents, business associates, and community partners attended last week's State of the Community event. And many thanks to all the city staff members and our community partners who facilitated the engagement stations that highlighted our initiatives. We'd also like to thank special guests, Dr. Marshhausen, Eric Richter, and Kenny McDonald, who joined us for the panel discussion on collaboration and economic development. I think that evening was a success. And then Saturday, after a four-year hiatus, we hosted the greenest and grandest St. Patrick's Day parade. And although it was a little chilly, we did have a really great turnout. And it looked like everybody was enjoying themselves. So again, I'd like to thank all the staff members that worked that day, the participants, and all of our community partners for contributing to the success of that event as well. And then finally, tomorrow, Mayor Fox and staff will travel to re-sign our friendship city agreement with Dublin, Ireland. This is a renewal of the agreement originally signed at the 30th anniversary of the Dublin Irish Festival. We anticipate strengthening our bonds with Dublin, Ireland, and will look for ways that we can work together in the future. They will also be guests of the Lord Mayor Caroline Conroy at the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on Friday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it. Next are our council reports. We have two committee reports. The Administrative Committee, Councilmember Vice Mayor DeMarisa.
Thank you. The Administrative Committee met last week. It largely consisted of continuing, conducting our boards and commission interviews. We have, as we always do, a wonderful, wonderful slate of residents who raised their hand for several open opportunities. And so we thank them very much for that. And council will complete that work yet this week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Public Services Committee.
Uh, yeah, we met on, on the 8th. And we reviewed some policies for events and reservations at Riverside Crossing Park and Kaufman Park. We had a couple suggestions and revisions. I believe it's coming back to committee to look at one more time before it comes to full council. We also saw an application for a new tier three event that's being proposed early this fall, the Dublin Color Fest. And so that will be coming before all of council soon, I assume.
Thank you. Council roundtable. Do you want to start?
Sure. I will start by wishing Councilmember Chris Amrose Grooms happy birthday. She is attending council meeting for her birthday today. I wasn't planning on singing. Happy birthday. I also want to thank staff I had in East Dublin Civic Association meeting last week. And many staff members showed up and stayed late into the evening and have answered questions both there and afterwards. And I got many thank you emails from participants that were very happy to have everyone there and hear answers firsthand. So just want to say, extend the thank you from them.
I might be a little long-winded today. There's a lot to talk about. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Marshhausen, Eric Richter, and Kenny McDonald, CEO of the Columbus Partnership, for joining us and contributing to the state of the community last week. A couple of comments made by the superintendent and Kenny McDonald were particularly interesting. Dr. Marshhausen said that the growth in central Ohio is bound to lead people to Dublin because of our schools. So got a brace for that. And Kenny said that the goal of central Ohio is to be the most prosperous region in the country. I think it's inevitable, given what's going on in the region. It's sort of ours to screw up. One, one thing I want to talk a little bit about is the housing conversation. And I don't, so I think at times we and, and other folks around the country blame themselves for mistakes made with respect to housing. And, and I would say that it's not that any mistakes have been made. It's just, it's, and it's, it's not unique to Dublin. It's not unique to Columbus. It's a phenomenon that faces everybody, and we are doing our part. I guess you would say that we have kind of a niche to fill. And I think we're filling that niche. If you drive through Bridge Park and you drive up John Shields Parkway, you'll see new housing going in. So I think we're, we're chipping away at the, at the issue. Second thing, I wanted to thank our event staff for the wonderful effort they put in for the parade. I think we probably handed out like two tons of candy. So hopefully our incidence of diabetes doesn't go up in the city. Thank our friends at JLU for their hospitality and warm welcome yet again. Attended Mount Carmel ground blessing this morning. They're going to be a great corporate partner. It's exciting to see that get off the ground with, after years of planning. The Columbus Metropolitan Club is hosting an, an event next, this Wednesday, discussing the potential Amtrak, hopefully I'm not stealing Chris Groom's thunder there, expansion through central Ohio. I'm not going to be able to make it, but all of those are available on streaming. And, and very interested to see where that goes. Also, some of you may recognize this person. Lisa McDaniel. I'd like to congratulate her on her wonderful rise to the top there. And finally, safe travels to Jane and Kathy. Yeah, I just want to say, great job and thank you for the St. Patrick's Day effort from the staff. It was a great event and everybody really enjoyed it, cold or not. It was really a lot of fun. And I want to thank the city manager and the city mayor, mayor for the, the long-winded soliloquies they had to do up there for the state of the city. I thought you're going to have to get a drink of water eventually. But, and again, well, well put together program. So thank, thank you and the staff. Then I was just, there was one thing, I walked through the Red Treview and took a good look at the arboretum. And there is a great diversity of trees. There's quality signage. It was really large in, in scale. I thought, you know, this is one of these overlooked, again, amenities of Dublin that we might have to get Scott Dring involved in because trees are well established and well marked and really in a quality way with metal signs. So I thought, wow, I've walked through a lot of arboretums and I'm really surprised that ours is so excellent. It really is. So we just don't get the word out. So again, it's one of those things that, you know, you should see when you come to Dublin. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll keep it short. Happy birthday, Chris. She is 29 years fun. A big, huge thank you to staff and certainly to our residents for making this St. Patrick's Day parade so special. I was reminded when I was thinking about the reverse parade that Megan had mentioned at the State of the Community, that when we did that, we did it for what, like an hour and a half longer than we thought we were going to? And that was also on Chris's birthday. So I'm feeling a little correlation here. You know, Megan and staff, because I know we can't do this without staff, wonderful job on the State of the Community. And a special thanks to all of our guests. And certainly for all the folks who, who showed up and came out that night. It was certainly a long week for most of us. And because we had, and Amy, you sell yourself short. Not only did you do that lengthy East Dublin Civic Association meeting, you also had an admin committee meeting before that. So she had a very busy day that day. It just goes to show you how dedicated that all of us are, how dedicated our staff is, and how dedicated our residents are to making this the best city to live in. So I really appreciate everybody. Thanks.
Thank you for the optimism of 29 and you're only 23 off. So thanks for that. Would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for the Economic Forecast Breakfast on the 28th. That was well attended and there was good information present there. Also attended the Government Affairs Meeting on the 1st with Dr. Marshhausen. And really good dialogue about some issues from folks at Wendy's and things about what they're, what the challenges are that they're facing. I did have an information, technology, and communications with the National League of Cities meeting on the March 3rd. And I will be traveling to their meeting as in person on the 25th of this month. And we were really fortunate enough that the work that we had been doing relative to municipal fiber and the federal government approving the fact that municipalities would have the ability to install and operate fiber, that argument, that would take that argument out of the hands of the state house. And so I'll be going to DC on, for a meeting on the 25th and meeting with some of our folks there. Hopefully, that is something that we will have success. It's, it is now on the National League of Cities priority list. So we will have this year and their lobbyists to work on that effort. So I've been in communications with Doug McCullough about some facts on that. So I'll have hopefully good news to share upon my return. Amy, want to thank you for a great East Dublin Civic Association meeting. It was really good to see so many people there and also staff. It, it really was palatable, the gratitude the residents had to be able to see all of you and ask their questions in person and face to face. We did have a Morpsy Commission meeting on the 9th. The rail deadline is looming on the 27th of this month. We did receive letters from Cornell Robertson with the Franklin County Engineers. And I believe we've received a number of other letters and support that we will assemble when we submit our member-directed spending requests relative to the 270 bridge. So I think that is, is going to come together really well and we'll be in good shape for that. I do know that there's been conversations with Morpsy about the amount of funding that we would request and things of that nature. So I think that request has already been submitted. If not, it will be this week. And so we should hear in short order. I did reach out to Congressman Carey and let him know that our material was on its way. We'd had an executive committee retreat on Friday for Morpsy. And we had Kenny McDonald come. There, we have an eight-member executive committee meeting. And Kenny McDonald came and had lunch with us, as did Jamie Green. And we talked about the state of the region. We went out to the intel site and we toured it and talked about some of the infrastructure challenges there. And we saw some of the roadways. But Morpsy will be a conduit of nearly $400 million of infrastructure improvements this year, much of which will be attributed to that site there. So it was a really great time together. We had a, a deep dive into housing. And, you know, you have a lot of different members there with Morps, with Whitehall and the City of Columbus. Joe Stefanoff hosted, the city manager of New Albany. So it was a really robust conversation. And Andy, there, there's, there's a lot more to talk about. And I, I think we are moving the needle forward in that, but there certainly is a lot of conversation to have. And then I'd just like to thank the staff for a great parade and a great state of the city. It was kind of the, I'll steal Brian O'Brien's term he used with me when I asked him what it was like to be the consul general of Ireland in Chicago around St. Patrick's Day. And he says that it's a Shamrock Hurricane. So I will steal his label of the Shamrock Hurricane that we just came through this weekend. But thanks to everyone for their efforts in that. And that's all I have.
Happy birthday, Chris. I've, I've already discussed with Jenny and we're going to make sure you have a public meeting on your birthday next year. We're not sure where that is, but we're going to make one up if it doesn't happen. So that, and my gratitude to the, the staff as well. The hours and hours and hours and hours that we know everybody has dedicated to it. And as the parade was concluding, it, it was almost like an orchestra to watch the team cleaning up and, and removing the, the roadway barriers and, and everything. And within an hour, it's back to the, the beautiful city it is. And it's, it's not by accident that those things happen. It's by excellence and hard work and commitment. And so it was just wonderful. So I'd like to add my thanks as well. Also had the opportunity to attend the blessing and the, and the groundbreaking from Mount Carmel. And I know that's been a, a lot of work. I will say, everyone that spoke from the Mount Carmel team just couldn't get over thanking the city for their partnership and their hard work on that. And several members say, you know, it's maybe not an easy process, but it's a good process. And sincerely appreciated that and look forward to moving forward as well. Just a couple other things. Had an opportunity with Councilmember Keeler as well to listen to the Dublin Wind Symphony Concert yesterday afternoon. I had never heard them perform before. They are absolutely amazing. I know they have another concert coming in May. So if you haven't had an opportunity to do that, the amount of musical talent in the city is, blew me away, literally and figuratively, pun intended. And it was just, it was fabulous. So congratulations and thanks to them for that. The Columbus Metropolitan Library kicked off their 150th anniversary this week. And so there'll be lots of celebrations. What a tremendous asset. And hopefully we'll have an opportunity to celebrate them as well. But over the next few months, before, I think the next couple of years of finished, every single library branch in the system, and I think there's like 21 of them, get that correct, we'll either have had a complete renovation or a brand new facility to support literacy in the community. And I think it is just absolutely wonderful. So safe travels to Ireland and look forward to hearing about how their little parade compares to our biggest, grandest parade. So I'm, I'm sure it'll be great. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say about the state of the city, I want to give a special thank you to Lindsay Weisenauer, our Director of Communications. What a production it was. I heard over and over and over again that evening, how professional, how polished, how great the city looked. And I'm just going to nod my head because I know how much effort Communications Department put into that. And it really showed. And also, I want to thank Megan because it was the state of the community. And I want to thank you for titling it that way. Because we've had the state of the city, and there are a lot of state of the cities. But a state of the community says something else. It talks about exactly what you did was bring in partners. The city is driven by the partnerships and the relationships and the work of an entire community to make this what it is. And having a state of the community said it very nicely. So I thank you for that. I, I think it really, it really sent a message, I guess I would say. So also want to thank the owners and staff of JLU for hosting the Grand Leprecon luncheon after the parade. And Deb Papish was a very fine representative of the grandest and greenest parade. And she so deserves it with all the work that she does during the year for, and volunteers with the schools and the Dublin Food Pantry. And I mean, name it, she has her hand in it. And I just think it's wonderful that, that Deb was, was honored. And she wore that green sash and held that shillelagh like the grandest of all leprechauns. So congratulations to her. This morning at Mount Carmel Hospital, the ground was blessed by Bishop Fernandez. And I think that was a wonderful thing. I know that Mount Carmel is very pleased to be here. They said that to us many times, but we couldn't be happier to have Mount Carmel here as another great healthcare provider to, to add to all the great health providers we have in our city. And then I also want to thank the Dublin Arts Council and David Gion for providing us with a gift for those in Dublin, Ireland, which is the beautifully artistically handmade geocaching. I hope I'm saying that right. The geocaching coin is the gift that we're, one of the gifts that we're giving because it represents so many aspects of the Dublin community. And it's easy to carry in a suitcase. But more than that, it's just the best and the perfect gift to give them. So, so those are my comments tonight. We are going to make a recommendation to move to amend the agenda this evening to add an executive session. So I move that we amend the agenda. And I would like a second for that. If you have it. All right. Jenny, please call roll.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Next, I'm going to move to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of considering the appointment of a public official. May I have a second?
Second. Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you.